Okay, good evening. It is 6:33 and we are calling the March 4th Town Council Regular Meeting to Order. Town Clerk, would you like to take roll call?
Sure, Councilor Bordelon.
Here.
Gajeski.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Merritt.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Pacino.
Here.
Rusk.
Here.
And Mayor Franco.
I am here. Thank you so much. Okay, up first, we're going to salute the flag.
I recite allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up next is recognition, awards, and memorials. Up first is on page three and four, Councilor Parker, would you like to take that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Proclamation celebrating William Michael Scarono's 100th birthday, whereas William Michael Scarono was born February 6th, 1925, to Michelangelo Scarono and Mary Bradford Scarono in New London, Connecticut, and whereas Bill married Rosemary Dale in San Francisco in 1945, and together they had one son, William B. After Mary's passing in December 1975 at the age of 51, Bill found love once again when he married Ann Besett in 1978. Bill is proud to call Ann's children Patty, Ann of Groton, and Michelle of Florida his stepchildren. Bill's family continued to grow with two grandchildren, Michael and Taylor, and two great-grandchildren, Charles and Marissa, who have brought him immeasurable joy and pride. Whereas today, we gather to honor and celebrate the extraordinary life of Bill Scarono, a dedicated U.S. Navy veteran, esteemed fire chief, community leader, and lifelong Groton resident on the momentous occasion of his 100th birthday. Whereas Bill answered the call to serve his country in July of 1943, joining the United States Navy during World War II and proudly served aboard the U.S. Sea Lion in the Pacific, contributing to the success of numerous naval operations and demonstrating unwavering courage in the face of adversity. Whereas following his honorable discharge in 1946, Bill turned his dedication to public service closer to home, joined the Eastern Point Volunteer Fire Department, where he quickly became an invaluable member of the firefighting community, serving as foreman of the volunteer division for four years. Whereas in 1965, Bill was appointed lieutenant of the City of Groton Fire Department, and in January 1968, at the age of 43, was appointed chief and fire marshal of the department, where he served with distinction for 17 years, leading with strength, integrity, and commitment to the safety and well-being of his fellow citizens. Whereas Bill's legacy of service did not end with his retirement as chief in 1985, he and his wife Ann went on to own and operate the Sea Roma for 23 years, contributing to the local economy and community, and continuing to embody the values of dedication and hard work. Whereas Bill's contributions to the Groton community extend far beyond the fire service as a lifelong life member of the Groton Lodge of Elks, the Groton Italian-American Club, the Shenacostet Yacht Club, and the Groton Submarine Veterans Club, where he holds the esteemed honor of membership in the Holland Club, recognizing his lifetime of service and dedication to our nation's military and veterans. Whereas even in retirement, Bill remains an active and beloved member of the Groton community, often found at Bufers in the early mornings, where he participates in countless discussions on local, state, national, and world issues, always contributing his wisdom, experience, and good humor, and solving problems one cup of coffee at a time. Therefore, be it resolved that the Groton Town Council, on behalf of the Town of Groton, wishes William Michael Scarono a very happy 100th birthday, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 10th day of February 2025, signed by Mayor Rachel Franco.
Thank you. We have another proclamation. Councilor Rusk, this was requested by you, would you like to take it?
Thank you, Mayor Franco. Proclamation recognizing Women's History Month. Whereas March is recognized as Women's History Month in a time to honor and celebrate the contributions, achievements, and impacts of women throughout history, across cultures, and in all aspects of life. And whereas women have played a vital role in shaping our societies, breaking barriers, challenging norms, and advancing justice, equity, and progress, often in the face of adversity and discrimination. And whereas Women's History Month serves as a reminder of the ongoing need to recognize the importance of gender equality, to advocate for the rights of women and girls, and to empower all people to contribute to a world that celebrates diversity, inclusion, and respect for human dignity. And whereas the theme for this year's Women's History Month, Moving Forward Together, Women Educating an Inspiring Generation, honors the groundbreaking achievements and legacies of women who have made lasting impacts in areas such as science, politics, education, business, activism, and the arts. And whereas this month provides an opportunity to reflect on the history of women's rights -- I'm sorry, on the history of women's rights movements, and to renew our commitment to creating a society where every woman has freedom, opportunity, and resources to achieve her fullest potential. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Groton Council does hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as Women's History Month, and encourage all citizens to honor the contributions of women past and present, to celebrate the achievements of women in their communities, and to commit to working towards gender equality and justice for all, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 4th day of March 2025.
Thank you. Okay, up first, we have public hearing. Clerk?
Okay. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Groton Town Council on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. at the Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, in Community Room 1, hybrid virtual meeting, to receive comments concerning a new ordinance to retain excess tax payment. Pursuant to Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statute, a legislative body of a municipality made by ordinance authorized the tax collector to retain payment in excess of the amount due, provided the amount of the excess payment is less than $5. The Town currently processes refunds of all payments to veterans within a period of six years from the payment date, and to all other persons who have overpaid within three years of the due date of the bill, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 26th day of February 2025. Marisol Melendez, Groton Town Clerk.
Thank you. I have the sign-up sheet for retaining excess tax payments. I have one person signed up. It's Tricia Cunningham.
I should be going to the wrong sign-up.
It is an error, so I'm going to cross this off. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this public hearing? Okay, not seeing anybody. We're going to move on to our next public hearing on parking fee amendment to ordinance.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by Groton Town Council on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. at the Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, in Community Room 1, hybrid virtual meeting on ordinance to amend Section 11-56 1 and 7-31 of the Code of Ordinance. The proposed amendment would increase, bless you, Groton's parking violation fine to $50 with a $100 late fee, Groton's fire lane parking violation fine to $100 with a $200 late fee, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 26th day of February 2025. Marisol Melendez, Groton Town Clerk.
Thank you. Do we have anybody? I have the sign-up sheet. Nobody has signed up, as anybody would like to speak on this public hearing. Okay, not seeing anyone. We're going to move on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or as directed by the mayor, and if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation. All presentations should be made from the lectern and should include the speaker's name and address for the record. This evening, we are going to limit comments to three minutes per person, and I have a list. Up first is Mike Doyle.
Hi, good evening. Mike Doyle, 15 Elm Street, Groton. I came to speak in favor of improving the athletic fields in Groton. My kids and I have coached on fields all across the town over the years. I've been coaching youth in high school sports since about 2000. I started out as a soccer coach for Groton Parks and Rec for six-year-old youths, later added lacrosse to my resume with the combined seals, lacrosse, Stonington, and Groton. Then I moved up and coached lacrosse at the high school at Fitch for about eight years. The Fitch High School and youth lacrosse fields were all over town. I was field coordinator for the lacrosse fields, but the youth practices were at the old Grasso Tech Track and Field behind the Sutton Park fields we've been talking about. It was wet and muddy most of the time, and there were shot put divots. We had to close off parts of the field for -- to use that. The high school practices used to be at Mystic Oral School for multiple sports, where there were rocks protruding, until the state wouldn't let us use that field facility anymore. And then at the former area property where the new Groton Middle School is located, we were using that field until the not-clean field that was used after renovations of the high school. We were glass and nails found there, so the high school closed that field for our use. Then in 2017, I moved on to, after my kids graduated, I moved on to Coach Montville for four years, and I've been coaching at NFA Boys Lacrosse since 2021. Both of those have lights and field turf. Right now, we're the only town, other than North Stonington, that doesn't have good modern high school fields. It's time to improve our fields and facilities. I've spent more than seven years supporting Athletic Booster Club in the small concession stand with the small bathrooms, the visiting locker room, quote-unquote, which was just a gathering place and storage area, which couldn't fit the whole team. I know there's a lot of money to improve -- I don't know it's a lot of money to improve all the fields at once, but we have to start improving the field. We've been discussing this for years. I have notes from 2013 meetings, and I know we were talking about prior to that. If it doesn't make sense from a bonding point to fund the entire project, I encourage you to send the high school fields portion of the plan to referendum in November to get the ball rolling. The high school football stadium, in addition to helping high school sports program dramatically increase the number of rectangular fields available for boys and girls lacrosse, boys' football, boys and girls soccer, and girls' field hockey. These fields will also support youth-by-youth lacrosse, the high school marching band, youth soccer, and youth football. Thanks for your time helping make Groton a nice place to live.
Thank you. Up next, I believe it might be Marie Shaw?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm going to read my remarks to try to be succinct. I'm privileged to be on the boards of two assets of the Town of Groton that helped to make this such a special community, the Groton Public Library and the Shenacostet Golf Course. This evening, I'd like to speak to each. First, during the many years I have served on the library board, I've greatly appreciated the town councils always supporting the library budget. Councils consistently place a high value on the mission of the Groton Public Library, that is to, quote, "bring people, information, and ideas together to enrich lives and to strengthen the community." How does the library do this? Through its five service priorities. One, to create young readers and foster success in school through early learning opportunities with its collections, resources, services, programs, and partnerships. Two, to stimulate imagination and satisfy curiosity through outreach, partnerships, and programming that engages all users to meet their personal learning and continuing educational needs. Three, to provide connection to the online world with high-speed access that ensures everyone, everyone, has advantage of resources and services using the Internet. Four, to help patrons know their community by providing the information patrons need to fulfill their civic responsibilities and to participate in community decision-making. And I'll just put a little plug-in for GMTV that shares not only your meetings, government meetings, but also the community events that occur in Groton. And five, it offers a comfortable place that's safe and welcoming, with physical space and an atmosphere for patrons. In your discussions and decisions, deliberations in the weeks ahead, please note that the fiscal '25-'26 library budget meets the parameters set forth by our town manager to maintain current services. Through efficiencies and creativity, the library staff and board will continue to find ways to be responsive to community needs as it enhances its services and adheres to its mission. And then finally, the library staff and board, we really look forward to becoming the host site of the SS Groton Sale. It's going to make the library be such a center of this wonderful Groton community. Okay, my second hat. My second board service is to represent the Women's Golf League on the Golf Advisory Board of Shenacostet. Thank you, and I sincerely mean it, for receiving and considering my letter last month, and for the decisions the council made regarding the 2025 course rates at last week's Committee of the Hall meeting. I fully support your directive to recommend no more than a 5% to 7% increase for Groton residents over 2024 rates, and to recommend at least a 15% increase of that number for out-of-town residents or non-residents. In my opinion, those proposed rates you saw last week lost sight of a very important goal of the advisory board, which is, quote, "to strive to diversify player demographics by gender and age, and to make it affordable to introduce families to the sport of golf."
Your time has expired.
Okay.
Can you say your name and address, though?
It's Marie Shaw, 20 Colony Road. And as I just leave, Chris Meany is going to follow, and she's going to speak to the $15 cart rate, and I totally support that for a woman.
Thank you. Chris Meany, up next. Chris Meany?
My name is Chris Meany, and I'm a City of Groton resident. My husband and I have lived at 54 Nicholas Avenue for over 35 years. We are both long-standing members of Shenacostet Golf Course and thoroughly enjoy playing there. The Shenacostet Course, Golf Advisory Board, the Town of Groton Recreation Commission have proposed, again, a number of changes and increases in the overall fees scheduled for 2025. One of these proposed changes is to increase the cart rental fee for senior golfers who play before 9 o'clock from $15, was one of their proposals, $15 to $20. There are approximately 40 men and women who rent a cart before 9:00 a.m. I feel that this proposed increase was unfairly penalized, unfairly penalized the group of early-bird loyal golfers, which includes many older seniors on a fixed income, and therefore especially sensitive to the effect of price changes. Many also are elderly and may have physical limitations affecting their ability to walk the roughly five-mile course. Renting a cart, therefore, becomes essential for many seniors. Many of these senior golfers are also members of Shenni. The ability to regularly play at Shenni is a benefit of living here, which enhances their quality of life. Playing golf is an opportunity for our citizens to just get out and have fun, and it should remain financially feasible. So I therefore recommend that this proposed increase in the cart rental fee from $15 per rental to $20 not be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Hazel Levine?
Hi, Hazel Levine, 24, Godfrey Street, Mystic. You may remember me from last month. I'm back, and I spoke last month about how important the athletic fields were for me in terms of quality of life, and when I first moved here with my husband, who's in the military, it's actually helped us decide to retire here. He just retired last year, and we plan to stay. But tonight, I want to talk to you from a different perspective, and that's the volunteer role that I am a youth girls' soccer coach for Groton Soccer Club, and I'm also the fields manager for the club, so I spend a considerable amount of my time scheduling all the practices and games each season. And my job tonight was to sort of explain to you how the fields are important to be built, because, and all of them to be built, because I do believe there's a trickle-down effect. A lot of the fields are shared. The high school players play down on Paquonic Plains Park in the fall, and that bumps then the soccer team, so it is a trickle-down effect, and it's all connected. But I really wanted to just break it down to one season, and I'm going to refer to last spring, so a year ago, I wanted to just explain the amount of usage on Paquonic Plains Park, only one field, just the football field, and that's the only one that we're permitted to use for soccer. I only really know soccer, so I can only speak directly to that sport. But I wanted to just explain how much one field is used over the course of a week, just for practices. It doesn't include games. So basically, we have 173 spring soccer registrations last spring, and we anticipate having the same this spring as well. That's divided among 14 teams. Only, that's only 17 more children playing in the spring than is in the fall. And in the fall, soccer in this town is traditional soccer season, and we have more fields available to us in the fall. But now we have equal amount of enthusiasm for the sport in both seasons. Spring is also the rainiest season, so Paquonic Plains Park is often closed due to soggy fields, which I believe is good. I think those fields need to rest when it rains. On rainy days, the town notifies the club fields managers, like myself, around, it's any time between 12:00 and 3:00 p.m. during my working day, to report the field closures, and then I have to scramble to tell the coaches, who then have to tell their players and parents, and make sure that's relayed in time. Sometimes that timing doesn't happen, and some few times last season, parents would drop kids off, not knowing the fields were closed, and the kids were there stranded until there were parents back able to pick them up. That usually only happens with the older age groups. So if we just focus on Paquonic Plains Grass Football Field, I want to explain that just during Mondays through Fridays last spring season, we used the field for 40, the soccer youth club used the field for 49 nights. That's 135 hours of soccer practices were held on that one field between 5:00 and 7:30 at night. That means three to four teams were practicing every night of the week, and that the fields were closed for six days in the spring, which means 16 teams missed practices for that season. We paid $1,325 to use Mystic Indoor Sports.
Ms. Levine, your time has expired.
For nine hours, and Mystic Indoor Sports is no longer available to us. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Up next is Devin Cook.
My name is Devin Cook. I'm a sophomore student athlete at Fitch High School. Firstly, in terms of the football field and track, our current athletic facilities are in need of urgent improvement. The football field is field, which currently requires frequent care, is rarely taken care of, and when it is, it's overwatered and gets torn up by the third game. Furthermore, the athletic facilities at Fitch High School are outdated compared to fellow schools in Connecticut. We are one of the only schools without a turf field, and it promotes more injuries. The vast amount of potholes and uneven grass is out of hand. The track is also a place of concern, as it feels like concrete and hurts with every stride. There's also elderly family members who can't come to games or events because they can't get into the stands. In my case, my great-grandmother, who is in a wheelchair, who I rarely get to see, can never make it to any of my home games or meets because there is no access for wheelchairs in the stands. By investing in better-quality fields, we can ensure a safer, more effective athletic environment while giving better athletics for our youth and the next generation of Groton athletics. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, James Cook.
Live in Groton, Connecticut, 60 Waco Court. I've coached youth football for the last 13 years in Groton. During these games, we had to call some because one of the end zones floods when it rains. Inside the fieldhouse, it floods in there, so when we store our equipment in there, we come back, it's moldy, we got to clean that up, so it's destroying some of our equipment. Also, I graduated in 2002, and I have played on the same field, I've ran on that same track that my son is also currently running on. Just like he said, we are one of the only schools in this area that has a grass field. It's time for an upgrade for these kids and the future of Groton. And also, the wheelchair accessibility at the schools also needs to be fixed.
Billy Boerswitz?
How you doing? Bill Boerswitz, 28, Country Club Road. I'm here for two things. One is, first, the support of the new athletic fields. I coached in the city for 26 years, Little League Baseball. Then I helped, then I coached my son in AAU, and then when he was at Fitch, I saw some of the fields that we would go to and play, and they had bathrooms there, they had handicapped seating there. If I still go into the gymnasium to watch a basketball game, it feels like 1989 when I graduated. So it's, you know, it's really time to start upgrading that. And I know, right before COVID hit, I was part of a committee or whatever that was putting a plan together. COVID hit, and obviously, you know, things went sideways for a little bit. So I'm glad to see it's starting to percolate again, and would really like to see this pass. And I mean, I just, I personally don't have any kids left that are playing, but I do have a couple nephews and friends that have kids that are coming up. Would love to see them play in some facilities that are really nice. But I mean, if you go to East Lime, and, you know, you go to Ledger, I know Montville's going to redo their turf field too as well, you can really see the difference there. And then one other thing I just wanted to comment on, last week on the Shenacostet Golf rates, I heard, you know, I like the recommendation of the 5%, but I didn't hear what the youth rate would be, or what that age would be. I know competing golf courses have a 25 and under rate, and last year in Oshanny was 21 and under. And my son, you know, he's going to be 20 this year, they have a bunch of their friends that got a bunch of people together the last two years and got memberships, and really went down and used that course quite a bit, and would love to see the rate, you know, I understand the rate's got to go up, but I would love to see that age, you know, stay under 25. So these are the people that are going to continue to play once other people stop playing, right? So, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Patricia Pia?
My name is Patricia Pia. I live at 56 Misty View Avenue in Mystic. I'm aware that the town is currently looking into uses for the former S.B. Butler School property, and I would like to see the S.B. Butler School property turned into S.B. Butler Park. It would be a place where families who live on the east side of Groton can have access to a recreational space, a place where families can take their young children to the playground, a place where kids can play softball and basketball using the facilities there, a place where people can walk their dogs and enjoy the outdoors, a place where people in the area can take refuge from the busy tourist traffic and activities that take place in Mystic. Please consider keeping S.B. Butler Green by making it a park available to all Groton residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Lee Williams.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name's Lee Williams. I live at 19 Ocean View Avenue. My partner and I moved to Mystic a couple years ago, and we were in search of kind of an old-fashioned neighborhood where you could walk your dog on the sidewalks and get to know people and be part of a community. We had no idea how we just landed in this jackpot of a neighborhood, this established, stable, committed place where people have lived there and raised their families for years and are still really invested in one another and in this town. I walk through this S.B. Butler property every day, and I see the use of that property. I see games of catch and kids running around and playing on the swing set. I see dogs being walked. I see people practicing their golf swings. I see so many conversations, and I'm part of so many conversations that take place when you bump into people there. In our neighborhood, we see the need for In our neighborhood, we see the need for, for housing in Grotton and, and we wanna be part of the solution and, and we're hoping that there's just some thoughtful approach to using this property. We just don't want that approach to be at the cost of the kind of neighborhood that we have. The S B Butler area is not a good location. If you don't have a car, there's no public transportation, there's no walkable access to supermarkets, pharmacies, and other services that people need. And so it's hard to imagine how it could be developed in a, with dense housing. If you do have a car, the traffic is gonna be a problem. I live on the main road that goes in and out of the neighborhood, Ocean View, and I, I see what happens at rush hour, rush hour in the morning and afternoon when cars can't pass one another because the roads are pretty narrow. My, my background, my whole career has been in higher education and student affairs, really focused on building, creating the kind of community that we have in Ocean View Heights. Neighborhoods like ours are the tent poles of, of a town like Grotton. They're full of people who, who show up for things, who are involved in their kids' schools, who buy raffle tickets, who go to the churches, who volunteer for local organizations. Neighborhoods like ours are, are the jewels of a town like, like Grotton. We, we hope that your goal as our elected representatives is to build more housing in Grotton and create new neighborhoods that are as wonderful as ours, not to do harm to neighborhoods that already exist. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, Russ Nickerson.
Hi, good evening. My name's Russ Nickerson. I live at eighty Island View Avenue in Mystic. I grew up across the street on Island View and attended S B Butler as a kid, as did both of my, both of my boys, as did many in this meeting. The open space at S B Butler is an integral part of the neighborhood where kids and adults alike, as Lee mentioned, have walked to and enjoyed for decades. I just wanted to raise for would be developers considerations. The entire school was built on and into ledge stone. As some in this room will attest, we used to crawl on the massive rubble, stone distributed about the property before being covered over to make fields. So in addition to the older buildings, asbestos, lead paint, and permitting efforts, the foundation, basements, and/or buried utilities will be a significant challenge, so I wanted to bring that up. But I really would like to request that this leadership work to reinstate Mr. Pritchard and work with us in the neighborhood on a common sense solution for developing these spaces. Thank you for your time.
Up next is Kristen Stam.
Hi, I'm Kristen Stam. I live at one eighty-two Bayview Avenue with my husband and my children, who've both attended S B Butler prior to its closing and currently still use the fields to meet up with friends throughout the neighborhood and play and just have a gathering point that's a safe space for them to play. I would like to put on record that I am not in favor of any high density housing on that property and I support keeping as much as that property green as possible. It is a, it is a property that is valued throughout our whole entire neighborhood. Many people come there to have good memories of whatever, it's either attending school or making new memories with their friends, and it's a safe space as well as, you know, anything that, if it's something that's monstrous that is decided that goes into that property, what will happen to the low lying houses in that property? I'm the, I have a current experience where a home has been built in my neighborhood and recently, and from the low area that I live in, the water runoff from that one house is flooding our drive and causing erosion and making our backyard a pool, just from one house. I can't imagine what kind of issues will arise to the homes that are low lying in the, in the low, lower half of that property to have any issues going forward from any runoff or change in that current property based on a development of some sort going in there. I can just foresee many different issues happening that will cause a lot of people to have major damage to their properties based on something going in there because it's getting changed. Please, you know, if something has to go there, consider the neighborhood, consider the people that are already there, and know that the property itself currently is thoroughly enjoyed by everyone that surrounds it and in that neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Tricia Cunningham.
Thank you, and sorry I assigned the wrong form. Thanks for setting me straight. I'm Tricia Cunningham. I'm actually from North Stonington, so I made a mental note about, about our fields over in North Stonington. But my address is seventy Miller Road, North Stonington, but I'm here representing Always Home, which is one of our local nonprofits in the region. And I'm here to just say thank you to the Grotton Town Council. So thank you to the Town Council and to the residents of Grotton for the tremendous support that you've sent Always Home's way for both art, through the ARPA funds and also recently the cannabis tax revenue. I just wanted to give you just a little, a little update just on the Wheels to Work funds that we've used so far. So far, we've been able to help twenty-two families in the town of Grotton, town and city of Grotton, and that amounts to about thirty thousand. And one of those families that we've helped recently, it's mom and a dad both working, his car broke down and they weren't able to afford to fix it. It was, it was beyond repair at that point. He had a shining light, he was able to get his, a vehicle from his mother, her vehicle, she didn't need it anymore, but he found out through that process that he owed some back due taxes, vehicle taxes. So that was going to hem that process up and keep him from getting on the road. Through that fund, we were able to assist with some back due taxes and now his car is registered and he's back driving. Another family, a single father, he works for a regional nonprofit. His car broke down and he didn't have the funds for his repair. Reached out to Always Home and we were able to assist this father with getting the car back on the road and he needed that desperately to work and also as part of his job, he was transporting clients. So, you know, we need him, we needed him enough safe and reliable vehicle. So these are the kinds of situations that you're helping to stabilize families and stabilize housing. And there's, there's more to come. I'll give you more updates as well next year if you want, but I'm really here to just say thank you to the town of Grotton for the support.
Thank you. If you have any questions or anything. Okay, that's, I've completed the list. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
And I request a photo of the Grotton Town Council when you break.
All right, thank you. We will take a break and do that. Thank you.
Tom Olson, one eighty-eight Crossman's Drive. I'm here to, to put some concerns in regard to the stuff in regard to the housing authority and your oversight of it, just to encourage that you take a very wide look at this. I recognize that there's investigations going on. My look at it sees there's some, a lot of issues relative to the nonprofit ownership, lack, improper filing of I R S returns to represent the holdings, that type of stuff. So ensure that, as you're providing oversight, I'd like to ensure that as best as transparency as possible, recognizing that there's issues with, from a legal perspective, but to keep the citizens informed as far as on where your oversight is being provided to that commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ian Thomas, twenty-four Jefferson Drive. I am, for full disclosure, I am also a Board of Ed member and spouse of Portia Bordalon, Town Councilor. First and foremost, I want to speak in support of the athletic fields proposals that are out there as a liaison to the Athletic Fields Task Force from the Board of Ed. I've had the occasion to sit in on a number of meetings. The proposals are very well vetted and are created in such a way that they are modular so that there is ways to parse them out. I would encourage this council to do what they have to do and the town staff to do what they have to do in order to bring the issues forward for a referendum in the fall. We do have an election cycle coming up, so I think it's a perfect opportunity to put it before the people. There's obviously a lot of community support out there. And I definitely, for myself, I would put a priority on the high school athletic facilities as they are by far the, the most out of date, as my wife can attest and others in the, in the crowd. She is a Fitch graduate and she remembers running those fields too up until about nineteen ninety-eight when she graduated. So, I also wanted to speak on, you know, as I have before, my concerns with the Planning and Zoning Commission appointment procedure that did not follow established town policy, town council policy in regards to those issues. I've enumerated those before. I'm not gonna belabor the point. I would just urge you all to take a moment, consult with your attorneys and perhaps make the reconsiderations that are necessary in order to get that right. Most Mr. Pritchard and Mr. Fiftill deserve better for their, for their time in service. I was also going to speak on asking this council to support and, and issue a letter in support of the state allocating forty million dollars for special education support. However, I just read in the news that it seems like the House, the legislature, and the governor have come to a deal and that forty million will be approved pending a vote tomorrow. So that's good news. And one other little note, you know, on the Board of Ed, there's been a lot of concern raised due to like federal funding. We got a letter from the Department of Education instructing us to, to strip out everything that was in any way attached to any sort of D E I, diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. And we also got a, a letter from the State Department of Ed saying that that doesn't necessarily have to be adhered to, it is not legal. So we are in the process now of trying to parse that out. But at the end of the day, D E I, to me, most importantly means don't erase individuals. You know, I know it's diversity, equity, inclusion, but at the heart of it, that's what it means to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to come up and speak?
Hello, my name's Amber Harris. I live at one forty-one Dartmouth Drive in Mystic. I'm a mother of three daughters who's very involved in sports, from soccer to basketball to cheer, to volleyball. So my, when I'm not at work, my times are spent at Fitch, Clawchester, and Paquannic Plains. And I also coach Grotton Mystic, one of the cheerleading squads. Like everybody's saying, nothing has changed. I graduated Fitch two thousand, it's exactly the same. And the fields at Clawchester are terrible when it rains and we can't, they can't be used with soccer or for cheerleading and that Clawchester is, is a mess and that's Grotton Mystic, Grotton Mystic Falcons only option for practicing. I would really like to see something done to those fields as soon as possible, just for the safety of our kids. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
John Kafka, I live at twenty Felt Drive.
I'm sorry, I'm writing it down.
John Kafka, I live at twenty Felt Drive. A F F E L D T. Most people don't know where it is. I've been a part of the Grotton Soccer Club for going on six years now. I, I was part of, I've been part of the Grotton Mystic Falcons for the last three years. Last year, I was the football director for them. My kid has been, both my kids have been playing cheerleading, soccer, football. One of the biggest instances I've had problems with the fields is my son, two years ago, he was out there practicing, hit a divot, rolled his ankle. We, well, we thought he rolled his ankle, he ended up cracking his ankle and he had to sit out the whole season because he could not play at all. It took that long to heal. So my son really, really loves football and for him to sit on the sideline, because he was there at almost every practice, almost every game with his team, supporting his team because he loves the game. Now, because of that and another injury he happened to have, not at our field, but another field, he's considering not playing football because of his getting injured, because of the different field conditions. So we need to do something about the fields. Any of the fields, just pick one. That's all that has to happen. Pick one and go with it. Just don't sit and not let anything go, not another year. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come up and speak? Okay. All right, then we're gonna be closing out the citizens' comment portion of our meeting and we're gonna move on to the consent. Oh, wait a minute, we're gonna take a break. It is six, seven twenty and we're gonna take our break and we'll be back in about ten minutes or so. so. (audio cuts out) Okay, it is 7:30. We are back from recess. We have Councilor Rusk, who will be returning shortly. Up next is our consent calendar. I believe this is on page 13 and 15, our packet. Councilor Gajewski, would you like to take that?
Yes, resolution accepting, resolution, I move that we move the consent calendar and a resolution accepting contribution to special trust funds and to approve the meeting minutes for February 2025 and February 11, 2025, and so moved.
Second?
Did you say February 4th and February 11th, 2025? Okay. All right. I thought you said February of '25.
Oh, sorry, February 4th of 2025 and February 11th of 2025.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay. Move by Gajewski?
Second.
Second by Pacino? Does anybody have any corrections? Seeing no hands, we're going to be taking a vote on the consent calendar for 2025-4-2 as well as 2025-218. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, communications and reports.
(audio cuts out)
Up next, communication reports. Up first is town councillors. Councilor Merritt, do you have anything you would like to share with us this evening?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. Councilboardaloon?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all the folks who spoke in respect of athletic fields, as I am a huge supporter, I will just say that, that I think that those are way overdue. I can remember coming down here as a youth and speaking about the sports fields, and it would always get rejected, so here we are again. So I just want to thank everyone who came out and took the time to speak about that. And I also want to state that I did receive many concerns about the appointment of Mr. Pritchard as well as, why am I drawing a blank? I apologize. Kevin Fiftill, as well as the process and procedures in which personal appointments is being proposed, and how the process is going forward. Also some concerns about S.P. Butler's uses, its future uses, as well as concerns with the upcoming tax season, I'm sorry, budget season, and concerns to what that will do to taxes, as well as concerns about the rates at Chana Caste Golf Course. And that's what I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything to pass at this moment.
Thank you. Council Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say congratulations to Community Speaks Out. I was able to attend their open house this weekend, as well as the mayor and Council Parker and Council Gajewski. Did I miss anybody? And, I'm sorry, and Council Jones, my apologies. It's a beautiful new building, and I'm excited to see what they can do. They've done so much for our community, I'm so excited to see that. I want to say thank you to everybody who came out to speak tonight. I also have received a lot of emails regarding the athletic fields, and we definitely are interested, okay, I'll speak for me. I am definitely interested in trying to see how we can move forward with this, but as I said last time, I'm concerned about the numbers. And so I'm hoping that once we get through the budget season this year, we can look forward to discussing how we could potentially look at the athletic fields and what we can do with that. I've also gotten a number of, or a number of contacts regarding concerns over the Board of Ed proposed budget and the 7.2-plus percent increase. So I've gotten a lot of those contacts, and I've spoken with people regarding S.P. Butler and had some communication there with what neighbors would like to see there. That is it.
Thank you. Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended the Community Speaks Out Open House, which was terrific. It was wonderful to see what we have done and helped them to now have a building and help them move forward. They will have their general complete open house on May 31st, but this was terrific just to see the progress. I've also received all the same emails. I also like to congratulate, and I attended along with councilors Pacino and Parker, Council Gajewski swearing in for state rep at the State House. We're all very proud, and it was an excellent ceremony and fun to see him standing at the podium giving a speech to the room. I also like to congratulate my older daughter in the birth of her son, Parker James Hartman, on Saturday. Everybody's thrilled, and baby and mom are doing great, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Council McBride?
Thank you. Nothing new to report other than what everyone else has reported already. Thank you.
Council Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Same communications as everybody else, and congratulations to Community Speaks Out. I did attend that event, and then on Friday I was sworn in to the Connecticut General Storm Lloyd. They're representative of the 40th District, Representative Groton in New London, so super exciting stuff, and I look forward to continue working with all of you.
Thank you. Council Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Everyone's spoken for me, so thank you guys. But I did receive all the same communications and speaking to people when I go to the grocery store, any public event, they have several concerns about several different things, and it boils down to where can we get the money? And that's my spiel. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I attended the Roberts Rules of Order and FOI training, and we received a lot of positive comments on that, especially the Roberts Rules. I think there are a lot of people that don't quite understand how the rules pertain to our council, and so that was, you know, eye-opening for some people. I also attended Community Speaks Out, which I'm very proud of their new, that they have purchased a new building with many of the councillors that are here. And one of the things is that hit me when people came and spoke in support of them getting this money was one person said, you know, "I never knew recovery could be fun. I thought it was a very serious, somber thing that you had to like really be serious about." And she didn't realize that she could have fun in recovery with karaoke and bowling and, you know, and doing events with other people in a recovery state. So I think they're going to try and bring a lot of that for their, for people that may need it, and I thought it was wonderful, and I'm glad that this council is supportive of that. And I'm glad people are coming out and talking about fields and the importance of them. I've been on the Athletic Fields Task Force since the beginning. I am a big supporter, and as has been mentioned, we have to see how we can do this and do it in a right and responsible manner. And I do know that there are conversations coming to the council about what our future bonding needs may be for other items, as well as if there is something here we can do as well. And I'd also like to congratulate Council Gajewski on your election. I know we said something last week, but I'd like to say it to you here in person, and congratulations to you, Council Jones, on becoming a new grandfather as well. Okay, up next, Clerk of the Council.
Just congratulations to Councilor Gajewski, and congratulations to Councilor Jones on being a grandpa. Nothing new to report.
Okay. And then we have Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting.
Okay, their next meeting is next week, March 12th at 7:00 PM at Thrive 55. Currently, there are five vacancies, one in District One, Democratic seat, one in District Two, also a Democratic seat, we believe that one will be filled next week, and a Republican seat in District Three, and two minority representations in District Four. No more to report.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm writing it down. Anything else? That's it? Okay, thank you. Up next, Town Manager Burt.
Good evening. Kicking off, I've had a few emails, emails questioning what's going on with S.P. Butler. Some people thought it was already at the Town Council stage, just to make it clear. It has not come to the Town Council, it'll be a while before it would. We first have to finish up the TOE process, which is mostly a staff and EDC process. So just to let people know, it'll be a while. Budget, we have to have it to print late this week, so we're wrapping that up. I'll give you a sneak peek. And always, as always, caveat this, I actually have control of slightly over 30% of the whole budget, so there's a lot of things I don't control. And these numbers will change as we get into the process, as always. This current year, '25's budget is 157 million, 136, 546. It's going up by 6 million, 4,000 and change to 163,147,07. That's about a 3.8% increase. Town operations is increasing, which is the bulk of what I have control over, is increasing That's a 3.0% increase. And then the '25 current mill rate is 23.08. I've put in utilizing 5 million in general fund, fund balance to offset increases. Using that 5 million, we would go up to 24.98 if nothing else changed, which is a 1.9 mil increase or 8.2%. If we didn't use the 5 million and nothing else changed, it'd be about another 1.36 or so additionally on top of that 1.9. So that's where we are today, it'll be...
Can you repeat the mill rate if it went through as is?
With, with the 5 million? What I'm proposing?
Yes.
It's, it would go to 24.98, which is a 1.9 mil increase. You might remember last year, that's right about where we started, the discussions also have to.
Point of information? Is that the numbers on this handout that you gave us, or?
Yes.
Okay, that's not what you're reading off of? Okay, just want to make sure. Because that's where the 24 point, I just want to make sure.
I'll be emailing that. That was an accidental handout. I had to print another copy because I couldn't figure out where my one went.
Oh, you left it at our table? You left it here at the table?
No, I, I was handing out other things. I accidentally handed out my only copy to Portia, or Councilor Bordaloon, so I printed out another copy. I was going to email it.
So we don't have that copy?
I was going to email it, I was going to email it tonight, though.
No.
Yeah, I was going to email it tonight to everybody, though. We received a visit from the state checking on, there's apparently a newer law on electric vehicle chargers. Municipalities either have to charge residents to use it or not allow them to use it. And of course, if you charge, then the state gets their portion of it. So our oldest, so we're looking at options, our oldest ones are from before my time here outside of Town Hall. We have to see if those can be converted even to pay ones or not. So we're still figuring that out, but they are actually going town to town checking on that, though. Few public works items, police locker room, which has been a long, you know, rebidding, 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 that's finally starting. Ventilation work starts next week, and it'll take about two months to do. And then the lockers will not arrive till mid-August, there's a long lead time for those. So those won't take long once we get them. Human services window replacement project, that's going to take place throughout May. Fixtures should be installed now in Par Four, should just be a few punchless items, so it's just about complete. We did a bid opening for the on-course restroom at Chana Caste in the maintenance building repairs. Unfortunately, bids came in very high. We had a substantial number of bids, but they all came in high. Our total funds available were 455,000, 300 325 of that, 325,000 of that was meant to be for the maintenance building work and another 130,000 for the restroom. The lowest bid that came in was 383,800 for the maintenance building work. It's like 63, or 60,000-ish over. And a low bid for the restroom was 284,900, so that went significantly over. We're moving forward with the, we did not think we'll get better numbers rebidding it. We're going to move forward with the maintenance building work, which is the more critical. Then we'll have to see if we want to do anything to finish up the restroom. New scoreboard is in at Burrows Field. It looks very good. In my report, there'll be a photo of that. And I learned something new last week that we sometimes have to remove half-sunk boats ourselves. So we had to pull out a half-sunk boat near Spicer Marina for about $12,000. And now it's stored over at here, at the annex. And then eventually you have to wait a certain amount of time, I forget the time, a few months before you can dispose of it. So it's a pretty rough shape. And then one last item, we're working with the Board of Ed staff on a Wi-Fi grant. We're looking to apply with each other, in conjunction with each other, for an expansion of public Wi-Fi. It would include expanding public Wi-Fi outside of our library, Thrive 55, Community Center, Town Hall, and Human Services. And the Board of Ed would focus on creating Wi-Fi at Branford Manor for free. So it's a quick turnaround, though. We have to have it done in by next Tuesday, the 13th, so later next week.
You have a point of...
I have a point of information. I thought we already had Wi-Fi out there.
Greater, much greater range. So it could get like, for instance, the library would get to the hockey and all that. So it's free money to have greater range on things.
But in Branford Manor also, I thought we all did that a long time ago.
I don't know, that's the Board of Ed portion?
Well, both sides did it a long time ago, I thought.
I don't know. I can check that.
Please check.
I'm assuming there at least is some weak spots there that need boosting. And then, so we'll be bringing it next week because the application is due March 13th, and I will get some more information.
Anything else? You got anything?
That's it for me.
Okay. Your question?
Is it okay, or do you...?
Yeah, go ahead, I said your question.
Okay. I just had a question regarding the charging stations. So if we can't figure out a way to incorporate a fee, because I was reading this in another town, they're just locking them.
Right, so staff only, right.
Or if you go to the, like, I saw one town, I don't remember the town, but if you go in, like, you're going to use the library, they have like a key so you can unlock it, so you can plug your car in while you're there. And then you return the key, you lock it when you leave and you return it, you know, like... So there's ways to kind of, is that, I guess what I'm asking, is that something we're going to look at too, or we're trying to determine if we want to charge or not charge? I guess I want to understand.
Right now Director Hanover's looking at all options. He'll report back to me, and then we'll see where we're at.
Perfect, thank you.
I will throw that idea out there to them, though.
Yeah, for the town ones, if we do, because I guess, well, I guess my other question was, are we seeing a high rate? And then you can come back with this. Some towns are reporting that people are parking in these spots all night.
We're getting into Town Hall, yeah, every night. I don't know if it's as bad at the library. We do get that, but I think Town Hall is probably the worst of it, but...
Yeah, and so some towns were saying for safety reasons...
Same couple cars every night.
Right, and some people were saying for safety reasons, like certain people are on properties all hours of the night and things like that, and cars being left on properties that, you know, aren't supposed to be there once the buildings close is kind of... Some towns are putting up trespassing signs on theirs as well?
We put up a two-hour limit sign, which has not been effective.
No, I'm just saying, they're putting like a trespassing, like after, you know, if the building's closed, the charging stations close. You know, like, so anyway, I'm just curious to see what you guys figure out.
To do that kind of policy, to allow any teeth to it, I'd probably need to go through the council to allow for towing in case of violation or that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my last thing is the way that they're...
This isn't for debate.
I'm just asking.
These are supposed to be like really quick questions, so...
And I'm asking a question.
I know, but once you keep asking, like, and get into debate, going back and forth, it becomes like an agenda item.
I'm asking a question. So my other question is, would it be then, the other proposals to state, if you just had them locked, you wouldn't have to worry about any of that, right? It would just be locked after hours?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Next is committee reports. So I am first as the mayor. The Town Council has received the Board of Ed's budget. That has been sent by, sent over to the town and has been forwarded to the council. Town Council has been receiving Groton Housing Authority updates and make it clear to the public that we do not oversee the Groton Housing Authority, that we do appoint members, but we do have the right to ask for some documentation to make sure things are being done properly. We have received information regarding the golf course, looking into an updated point of sale and trying to expedite that, I don't know, purchase. The three-on-three for the city of Groton, transportation is scheduled for March 15th from 9:00 to 10:00 AM, and councillors have been made aware of that. I received an invitation to attend the commissioning of the USS Iowa. And from what I understand, it might just be an invitation to the mayor. So I'm going to reach out and see if we could potentially get some more invitations so more of us can go. But I will keep you updated on that because I know the commissionings are very exciting. All right, that's all I have for today.
Madam Mayor, can I just mention one thing? Kind of adding on to your Shana Casa. Just to let people know, we've been jumping on the point-of-sale systems. We've already got a couple demonstrations set up and planning to forward that, get through that as quickly as we can.
Right, yeah, definitely trying to expedite that. Your question?
Regarding the commission, I have been, as my husband served in the Navy, so I have been to some commission votes before, not in quite some time. But I just wanted to ask because if it does open up, I am interested. My son is coming down from Maine Maritime Academy with the ROTC program, and they're bringing a whole crew from the University of Maine as well. And it would be great if there is an opening that I may be able to get a ticket to go.
All right, I will see what I can do.
Thanks.
And we will check with the whole council as well as if there's anybody else that would like to attend. Excuse me?
What's the date of that?
It'd be April 5th. All right, so up next, personnel and appointments. Chair Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will be having in new business, new appointments and reappointments, so that will be coming up. And there will not be a Personnel Appointments meeting in March as I'm on vacation.
Councilor Boarder.
I just had some questions, I guess, because I had some comments, I guess, regarding Mr. Pritchard's appointment. You know, some are saying, I guess, where do we stand now? I guess somebody didn't take their seat that you guys appointed. What seats are vacant? If you could just, you know, just explain what is opening as far as those seats go for planning and zoning and where we stand as of today, just to clear the air.
I think there's one alternate.
I'm sorry?
One alternate.
Opening?
Opening.
And then the person who was appointed to the full-time has not been sworn in yet? Is that correct?
Town Clerk, has the person been sworn in yet?
Has not been sworn in.
Point of information? My question would be, is that under his report about who is going to what spots?
This is the portion where you can ask the Chair questions because once we get to the agenda topic, we stick to the agenda topic and can't ask additional questions.
And then, so, and then if anyone wants to reapply, they have to wait one year? Is that the understanding?
Only if they have, it's already been decided.
All right, so we have one alternate position open?
At this time.
And then the full-time vacancy, as you stated, they did not take their seat yet? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Up next, rules. Chair Parker.
No committee, no report.
Thank you.
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. Rules, no. I'm sorry, oh, you have a question on rules?
I was just wondering about my rule that was referred over. Did it ever get the vote votes?
It did not, no.
No, okay, thank you.
Okay, Public Safety Chair Rusk.
No meeting, no report.
Okay. And at this time, I, right before we get into new business, I would like to ask for reconsideration. I am, I move to reconsider the vote on the motion to appoint Lauren Gothier to the Planning and Zoning Commission from the February 4th, 2025 Town Council meeting. And I'm looking, I believe we will first vote on a reconsideration.
Point of clarification, I'm confused, sorry, just say it again.
I move to reconsider the vote on the motion to reappoint Lauren Gothier to the Planning and Zoning Commission from the February 4th, 2025 Town Council meeting.
As a permanent member?
Yeah, as a permanent member. We, at our last Town Council meeting, she was appointed. We moved, she was elevated up to a full-time member. I want to reconsider that. Do I have a second? Okay, so let me just ask, let me just check real quickly. And we're voting on a reconsideration first. And then once the reconsideration, if it passes, we will then go into the debate on the topic and the motion. So...
Point of information?
We're vo... Let me see if reconsideration is... Just one moment, please. It's reconsideration, reconsider. Mayor, just a second. It's people. Okay, go right ahead.
I guess I just want to understand, so we're, because it just saying to reconsider, so there's not a lot of information there.
Well, I can't get into a lot of information until we decide if we're going to reconsider the motion to reappoint Lauren Gothier to the Planning and Zoning Commission from the February 4th, 2025 Town Council meeting, which was our previous Town Council meeting. And at our very next Town Council meeting, a reconsideration can still be done.
Move along.
Okay, all right. So all those in favor of the reconsideration? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm standing, abstaining because I'm not...
Thank you, that says eight to zero to one. All right. So the motion is on the floor for Lauren Gothier to be reconsidered as part to be, it's a reconsideration of her appointment to the full-time member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Hold on one second here. As hers already been asked by the Town Clerk, she has responded that she has not been taken the oath at this time. Although she has not taken the oath or become, to become a participating member in the Planning and Zoning Commission. Town Charter 8.1.1 eligibility for membership. After selection and notification, they shall be sworn in by the Town Clerk or designee before having the right to participate and vote. This is from our Town Charter. I see one that Ms. Gothier has imposed conditions to her appointment, which are inconsistent with the Charter and violations, is a violation. Ms. Gothier has participated in the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings without being sworn in, again, a violation of the Charter. Also to note, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a regulatory body. Members make decisions based on regulation and law. The correspondences this council has received, as well as the actions taken during Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, have shown an unwillingness of Ms. Gothier to take the advice of the Town Manager, who is the chief executive and is responsible to see that all laws and ordinances governing the town are faithfully executed, nor the Town Attorney, who shall protect the rights of the town in all actions. Members of regulatory boards will be dependent upon receiving opinions from the Town Manager and the Town Attorney, and to disregard such opinions brings forward additional concerns. With all that said, I would like to vote on Lauren Gothier's appointment to the full-time position of Planning and Zoning Commission. And the reconsideration is, if we vote in favor, you are saying, yes, you want her to go on to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you vote opposed, she will not be moved up to the Planning and Zoning Commission and would remain as an alternate. So, and with me saying this, and some people at home may not understand, but this council has received numerous emails with correspondences where the attorney's opinion has not been received. And I will say, I will read the attorney's opinion. "I am the Town Attorney for the Town of Groton, and I wanted to chime in." This is an email to Lauren. "In here to let you know that my office has reviewed the appointment process in question and previously opined on such process was in fact proper in light of the town's charter, ordinances, and appointment policy. No further action is necessary to that, and the Town Council has replaced Mr. Pritchard and is no longer eligible to be, to participate as a member. You have been properly appointed to a full-time member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and you currently hold the seat. All that is necessary in order for you to commence taking part in the conduct of the Planning and Zoning Commission business in your current seat is your swearing in. I wish you the best in your new position, and should your attorney have any specific questions, they may contact me directly at this email or by telephone."
Point of information?
Your question.
So what you're asking is that the decision of the personnel and appointments and the decision of the people who voted in favor to elevate her to a full-time position to remove Mr. Pritchard now, you're feeling is not the right decision, and you're putting it forward to a vote?
Point of order? Your point of order.
That is inferring more than what is here.
I guess what you're saying, she's not taking her seat, so I'll restate it. You wouldn't be bringing it back up if you were concerned that you're trying to not elevate her? Is that my, that's my question? You want us to reconsider putting her in a position? Is that what you're...
That's what we are considering.
Okay, so basically, okay, all right, I'll wait till my turn to state that.
Point of information?
Councilor Pacino.
Can Ms. Gothier hold the voting member position and the alternate position at the same time?
No.
So which position is she currently holding?
We passed her at the last Town Council meeting over a month, like a month ago. And she, so that means she was elevated up to the full-time position. She cannot participate until she takes the oath, which she will not, she will not do. She is requesting a formal written opinion by her Town Attorneys. And that is why I'm saying she is imposing conditions to her appointment, which is inconsistent with the Charter and is a violation.
So she has...
She would be moved...
We relinquished her alternate position at this point.
Yes.
So if we vote to not have her continue as a full-time member, she will not be an alternate?
She would be moved back down. We are undoing what we did basically last meeting.
I understood, understood. Okay, thank you.
It's a reconsideration of what we did last time. And if we undo it, if you, if this, if she does not stay elevated, she goes back down to an alternate.
Understood, thank you.
Point of information?
Your question?
Do we have any write-up on that or any opinion on that? I just want to make sure, not second guessing, I'm just not as familiar, that do we even have the jurisdiction to, is there, I guess, what am I trying to ask? Is there a time limit in which someone could be sworn in if they chose? Like, whatever clarification that she's looking for, do we have a right to suspend that during that time? Because we're saying she's not moving fast enough.
Yes, I've talked to the attorneys about this.
Okay, okay, and then would she then have to, the undoing would just put her back, my other question, would put her back as an alternate automatically, or...
She would go back as an alternate.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're operating, I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
You're, go right ahead. Councilor Boarder.
I just, I don't know what to think, I guess. I'll try to make my comments very germane and appropriate as I can. All that's concerning to me, in my opinion, the whole Mr. Pritchard, Mr. Fiffle, appointment process...
That has nothing to do with this, you're off topic.
Point of order.
You're off topic.
My opinion, the process in which she was appointed, I feel, which I have a right to say, because I voted, I did not vote in favor, I didn't feel it was the right way to be voting and removing people that were already in good faith, serving. So I just think this sends a weird message, is my concern.
Weird message is motive?
To me, I feel like it's a weird message. It feels weird to me. So I am concerned about the process again, because tons of people spoke and were concerned, and now we're possibly, depending on the vote tonight, going to remove someone back down. And so what happened to the other person that she replaced is my next question.
That seat is back open up.
The other person goes back in it?
That person could sit in it until they are replaced.
Right, so that's my question, I would think that if, if miraculously, the person that didn't take their seat that we elevated goes back to an, to an alternate, the person that she was replacing should go back to their seat, no?
I just said yes.
I'm just asking, because that was not put on the record, is all.
They would, yeah.
And who would that person be?
The person that sat in it beforehand, yeah.
Who would that be? I just want to be clear for the record, who was the person that was in that seat?
Point of order, that's argumentative. It is argumentative, you know who it is, it's argumentative.
You do, I believe you do know, you've...
I would just like it for the record.
Talked about it incessantly, you have talked about it.
Who's the person?
No, I disagree.
Point of order.
Your point of order.
The quorum, Counselor Bordelon has the floor, not Counselor Merritt.
Thank you.
So I would just ask, can we just state, is it, is it Fiffle or Pritchard that would be taking that seat back? I just want to be clear, because some people are not following all of us, like, it should be stated, who would go back in that seat? That's all I'm asking, it's not argumentative.
Point of order. Do you not know?
I'm just making sure, is it Pritchard?
I'm asking, question, do you not know?
I do know, but I'm asking because it wasn't stated as that's the option, we only talked about one person.
Counselor Parker, you have a point of order.
Okay, we are not germane to the topic at hand, which is, we're speaking about Lauren Gothier right now. Anyone else, anyone else, we're doing a reconsideration, and you brought forth a motion on the floor. That is what we're talking about, that's it.
Thank you, I concur.
So, to be clear, I'm just asking, in order to talk about that, we have to talk about who's going back into that full-time seat, no?
You just said you know who it is, so I'm not answering.
But I'm asking, she said it's not germane, is that germane to the topic?
We are not answering it.
I'm just asking, can you answer if it's germane to the topic, so I can speak?
Counselor Bordelon, you are out of order. I have already said I concur. You just keep pushing the same question, please stop.
I, I think it's just, I just don't understand why we don't want to, I want to look at the whole package of how, it's a train effect, one person replaced another, and so I'm just asking, would that same thing, and you said...
It undoes what we did at the last meeting.
I just have a lot of concerns, I obviously think the person that vacated the seat should go back to the seat to begin with, in my opinion, they should never have left, that's my opinion. So I'm in full support of that. This process, though, I'm very concerned with, overall. I, I think it's, to me, throws up a lot of just flares and confusion, and, you know, in some of the, anyway, we'll see what other people have to say, but, it just, I don't know, thank you.
Point of clarification, or point of information?
Your question.
Is, so the motion on the floor was the motion to reconsider the vote for Lauren Gothier, and that has been voted on?
Yes.
What is the current motion on the floor?
It is the original motion that was brought forward to elevate Lauren Gothier to full-time member on the Planning and Zoning Commission. It brings that back to the floor.
Okay, so my question is, we go back to this original person who made the motion and the second, I'm just, want to make sure that...
No, it's a reconsideration, just simply of that, that motion.
Okay, but does that, if we voted on the reconsideration to bring it up on the, I just want to make sure, sure procedurally we're doing this correctly, my apologies. We made a motion, you made a motion to reconsider a vote for Lauren Gothier, that passed.
It brings back the original motion to elevate Lauren Gothier from part, alternate to full-time member.
And that does not need another motion and second?
It passed with the reconsideration.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It brought it to the floor.
Thank you, that was my next question.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor McBride.
Thank you. I'll be abstaining from this vote, just as I abstained from previous votes relating to this, because I think the process is flawed. The entire appointment process, in my view, has not been proper, so I will not be voting in favor nor opposed to this process until I see a transparent process on the Appointments Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will, I'm on the Personnel and Appointments Committee, I was very excited about Lauren Gothier applying as an alternate, and I voted in favor of her moving up as a permanent member. I thought Lauren could bring a fresh perspective to the, let me rephrase that, I thought Lauren could bring a different perspective, she lives in a different neighborhood that is currently not represented on Planning and Zoning. I was very optimistic about that and excited about that. I am concerned that this is a regulatory commission and that she has not yet chosen to take her oath, and that she has pushed back against her attorney's opinion, and that we're in this state. So, I'm hoping that we can fill that seat with somebody who, who can follow our charter and follow our attorney's opinions and the law. And I'm not saying that Lauren can't do that, I'm just saying that at this point, I'm concerned also with what has happened, so that's where I'm standing.
Yeah, I'm just, again, I'm kind of thinking with Counselor McBride, I think my station's going to be because of process, and it's just, I'm, I'm, I am concerned. You know, there was great thunder to reappoint somebody new, and sometimes, in my opinion, speak for myself, something new maybe is not always the right answer, maybe we had what we needed. And at that time, I know I spoke and stated on the record that a person, you know, serving for this time, we shouldn't look to replace it just for a new perspective. And here we are. So I am extremely concerned with the process, my abstention would be because of the process in which this is coming forward, the process up until everything, and, you know, I firmly believe Mr. Pritchard, you know, with his knowledge, should have remained in that seat all along and should have never left.
That is not germane to the topic right now.
Well, it's, it is germane because by this appointment, he comes back, which is great.
Point of order.
Your point of order.
The quorum, the mayor ruled on her decision of not, it not being remained, germane to the topic, and I request the council return to order.
Thank you, I agree.
Okay, so, I, again, I won't say the name, but basically, this is changing, it's not just a single item that's happened, it's a chain effect. By changing the votes now on how we want to move forward, there is a chain reaction, this person then moves back to their seat prior, and that other seat opens, I don't think we need to seek anybody else. Let's leave it as where it is. Anyway, I'm, I'm just extremely concerned and worried and confused, because I personally don't see Mrs. Gothier's abstention to get clarification necessarily to, I mean, I mean, if she's asking for something, maybe something's not clear. I don't know. I don't, I don't know when you guys, I guess when she was interviewed, maybe that wasn't clarified, I don't know. I mean, was there a chance where these questions asked, I guess? Did she ask these questions that she's asking now when she was looking for appointment? Through the mayor?
We're not asking questions right now.
Well, I guess she was interviewed and selected, it was the chosen person, and I just am shocked that, anyway, I'm really confused on this one, this is quite interesting. So, I, I, at this point, I feel like I should abstain, but I also want to vote and make sure Mr. Pritchard gets on, so I'm kind of torn.
Point of order.
What's your point of order, Counselor Merritt?
We're talking about one person, and we keep hearing about another.
I agree, I concur.
I think this is about time to come to an end and bring this to a vote.
Okay, there's somebody, other counselors have hands, thank you. Counselor Jones.
I will also be voting no on this, and I will echo the views of Counselor Russ, I agree, and on the same lines, so.
Counselor Gieske.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor to the town manager or town clerk. For an appointment to a Board of Commission, has a legal opinion in your time here ever been asked by an applicant?
No.
And then, follow-up question, has...
I'll take that back, to the former person, I believe, asked for one, that was the first time.
Okay. And then, through the mayor, to the manager, how many times do, how do I want to word Would you say it's rather regular that an opinion, a legal opinion...
Formal legal opinion.
Formal legal opinion is asked by a member of a board or commission?
Well, because our, I mean, our tailman is occasionally, it's not too often otherwise, other than strictly, like, a, like you might have a zoning case that's tricky, you know, more of an item, you know, right, real action item, a regulatory type item where there's real repercussions, that occasionally.
And then, through the mayor, through the manager, how much roughly does a formal legal opinion cost the town in taxpayer dollars?
It could vary, it's usually two, three, four thousand, somewhere in there, depends on how much time they have to put in, it can be more.
So my concern with this, and why I will be voting no, is normally, when you get appointed by the council, and you are voted on a council to serve on a Board of Commission, you go and get sworn in, and you don't ask for legal opinions, and I, this is concerning to me, in the sense that if this start, we're going to be starting out with legal opinions, we're going to be asking for formal legal opinions and not taking a simple email from the town attorney as a legal opinion, and that will cost taxpayer dollars in the long run, and I think it's...
Point of order.
It go.
Your point, your point of order.
Motive, we don't know that that would happen, that's a large assumption.
That is correct.
That's unfair.
I will return to order. So, that is, I'm just going to leave it at that, and I yield back.
Thank you. All right, so, I'm just going to go through a couple of my notes here, because I did write down a lot of stuff that I was going to say tonight, and I probably don't have time to do so. So, I'm going to just highlight the part of where Ms. Gothier had responded to her email when Mr. Burt had basically reminded her to, to get sworn in, back on February 24th, she responded, "I've been holding off getting sworn in because of the concerns of irregularities related to the appointment process." And the email goes on with her to, with her views of the council's appointment process, and that her belief is Mr. Pritchard should hold the seat if, if she doesn't take the oath. Then it goes on to where, on February 24th, our town attorneys responded, which I read earlier, but I'm going to highlight, "My office has reviewed the appointment process in question and previously opined on such process was in fact proper in light of the town's charter, ordinances, and appointment policy. No further actions are necessary."
Point of order.
Ms. Gothier?
Point of order.
Your point of order.
I'm just a little concerned, I just asked for a ruling on, you're saying his name, Mr. Pritchard, and saying, and I was kind of saying the same thing, only I wasn't reading it from a letter, and I'm out of line, but you're not, so I'm just trying to understand why, if I read it in her letter form, it would be okay?
I'm, these are not my words, I am reading the emails, thank you.
It just doesn't sound balanced.
On February 25th, Ms. Gothier replied, "I appreciate the response, Ms. Kelly, I suggest, though, in understanding the basis of your opinion without citation of Charter, policy statute, case law, et cetera, what you've basically written, at least, as I understand it, is," in quotes, "because I say so. Unfortunately, I can't waste billable hours with my attorney on that. Can you please provide, as requested before, the relevant and specific legal reasoning as backed by your governing documents or cited state statutes or cited case law that underpins your opinions?" And Mr. Burt, Mr. Burt had responded on the 25th of February, and said that the council had previously declined a formal written opinion, because we took the attorney's verbal opinion. So, while being elevated, though not sworn in, on February 11th, the 20th, the 25th, Ms. Gothier participated in planning and zoning meetings, while clearly stating that she was not sworn in. On February 25th, Ms. Gothier requested at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, a request for a formal attorney's opinion. So, she has participated in Planning and Zoning Commission meetings without being sworn in. It is a violation of our charter. Our charter says, "After selection and notification, they shall be sworn in by the town clerk or designee before having the right to participate and vote." She sat in those meetings, she discussed things with developers or people that came before her, she is not supposed to even participate, because she is not sworn in under that position. She said in her own emails that she was looking at the charter, so she should have looked as well to see if she was violating it. I think this whole thing is basically nonsensical, that you need to, she is requesting and putting, imposing conditions onto her appointment, which is not consistent with our charter. It is a violation. So I also will be voting that no, she should not rise now. Counselor McBride.
Just a point of clarification, she was an alternate member, though, correct?
She was at one point.
So if she was an alternate member, couldn't she have assumed the, I'm just talking about her ability to participate in meetings, couldn't she have participated in the meetings as an alternate member, even if she didn't get sworn in, because that position was vacant? So that would have made her a, what do you want to call it, a person that could discuss matters?
Well, on February 24th, in the email trail that we all received, Mr. Burt emailed Ms. Gothier, "Just a reminder to get sworn in. You are currently in the full position, but can't vote until you are sworn in. You aren't able to vote as an alternative, since you aren't in the position any longer. You may want to consider not participating in discussions prior to swearing in, since you are not, you are in a bit of a limbo before then."
Okay, I understand.
Once the council lifted her up to the full position, she no longer sat in the alternate at all.
Just to mention, what I was doing was relaying the attorney comments, so...
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
No, thanks.
Point of information?
Your question.
Is it that you just can't vote, but you can just, like, there's meetings where you, could she, is it only if she voted? Because, did she vote?
The Town Charter says, "After selection and notification, they shall be sworn in by the town clerk or designee before having the right to participate and to vote." She cannot participate.
I guess it doesn't say, and you lose your alternate position, until then, it doesn't say that.
That's not...
Because I know, I guess, a point of...
It says you're not, you don't have any more time left, we are not debating now.
It's not clear, though.
Okay, seeing no more hands, we're going to take a vote. The motion is to move Lauren Gothier up to the full, up from an alternate position up to a full-time member. This is the reconsideration of that question. All those in favor of moving Lauren Gothier up to, from an alternate to a full-time member on the Planning and Zoning Commission, say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Aye.
McBride abstains.
That fails, zero to seven to two, with McBride and Bordelon abstaining. to... From an alternate to a full-time member on the planning and zoning commission, say All those opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Aye.
McBride abstains.
That fails. Zero to seven to two, with McBride and Bordelain abstaining. Awesome. Thank you. All right. Now, onto new business. And actually, at this time, I'd like to take a recess. I'm sorry. I'd like to take a little break. We'll take about a 10-minute. It is 8:23.
Okay, it's 8:36 and we're back from recess. We're back from recess. Up next is 2025-158 various appointments, reappointments. Council Jones, would you like to take this because it's your first one?
2025-158 various appointments, reappointments. Resolution making the following appointments, reappointments to authorize agencies, authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. Resolve that the Town Council appoint the following individual to the authorized ABCs as noted. For an appointment, Denise Thompson for Community Development Advisory Committee. Appointment David Atwater to Community Development Advisory Committee. Reappoint, appointment Marjorie Gookins to Community Development Advisory Committee. Reappointment Roger Sherman to Shellfish Commission. And reappointment of Ally Mitchell to Shellfish Commission, so moved.
Second. Moved by Jones, seconded by Rusk. I need to disclose that the reappointment of Marjorie Gookins to the Community Development as an advisory committee is my mother. All right, not seeing any hands, we're going, Council Boarder line.
Was there anybody else that was going for these positions that were not considered?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to.
All set? Okay. Seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-158 various appointments and reappointments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Actually, Council Boarder line, I didn't hear yours.
I said aye.
Okay, thank you. 2025-196-1 Police Collective Bargaining Agreement. This is on page 30 of our packet. Council McBride, would you like to take that one?
Certainly. 2025-196 Police Collective Bargaining Agreement. Resolve that Groton Town Council hereby approves the agreement and the expenditure of funds necessary to implement the agreement inclusive of Attachment C, an agreement between the Town of Groton (misspelling) and Groton Police Union Local 3428 of Council 4 AFS CME concerning pensions between the Town and Local 3428 of Council Number 4 AFCME AFL-CIO on a successor collective bargaining agreement for the period July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2028.
Second, Pacino.
Moved by McBride, seconded by Pacino. All right, I'm not seeing any hands, we're going to take a vote. Oh, Council McBride?
Sorry, I didn't know if anyone else was going to speak. I have a couple, a comment, just the one thing I want to make sure everybody's aware, the Groton residents. This agreement contains an important change, that I believe is important at least, to ensure the residents are aware. The schedule in this, the schedule in this agreement for patrol officers in the patrol division changed from what's called a 5-2 schedule to a 5-3 schedule. And what that means in short terms is they work five days on, three days off versus five days on, two days off previously. Now, when this first came about in discussions, I had some concerns with that due to some 5-3 scheduling I've seen elsewhere, concerns about the additional costs this may bring to the town. However, I want to let everyone know that I've talked to John Town Manager Burt, Chief Rosaro, Director Morrison, have worked with them and asked numerous questions about whether or not they've did the full review to make sure there was going to be no abnormal cost increase with this new schedule. They have assured me and they've done many implementations. As a matter of fact, I think the schedule has been going on for some time now, possibly up to a year, and they reviewed the information to determine that there would not be any additional cost in this new schedule. I just thought it was important to bring this information to the residents, that it is a change. I support the agreement, it is a, is a great indicator of retention and morale in the division, so I support that. I was just concerned about the expense, but they've assured me that there would be no additional increase in costs from the schedule, so I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. Thank you.
Council Boarder line. I just want to say, I too support it because of the 5-3. I think it's very important for folks who work in this type of field to make sure that the burnout and relaxation and morale for family and balance of mental health and relaxation and welfare is important and protected. You know, just like in the military families, you know, there's a lot of sacrifice and time away on holidays, and, you know, with our local patrol, it is important that they're, you know, getting the alternate schedule off so that they can have certain weekends and days off with their family as needed. So I think that's very vital, and it's very important for mental health and morale. Thank you.
Okay. Just very quickly, Mr. Burt, the 5-3 was something that they had done previously, correct?
Yeah, when it did affect approximately a year and a half ago. They wanted to have a full year under their belt to work out the kinks, which they did. Yeah, it was good that they did the trial.
Thank you. All right, seeing no hands. And just to let the community know, these are items that we have gone over in Committee of the Whole in full and had full debates and discussions, and this one particularly, we were in executive session. So a lot of questions have been asked and decided in Cow Committee of the Whole. So, taking a vote on 2025-196-1, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-162-1, the alteration of Ascenic Road 1130 River Road to set a public hearing. Council Rusk, would you like to take that one?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-162, alterations of Ascenic Road 1130 River Road, set a public hearing. Resolve that the Town Council will hold a public hearing regarding the alteration of River Road on April 1, 2025.
So moved. Second. Moved by Rusk, seconded by Boarder line. All right, seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-162-1. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-115-1, Emergency Management Performance Grant. This is on page 32 of our packet. Council Pacino, would you like to take that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-115, Emergency Management Performance Grant. This item is recommended for approval of the Committee of the Whole, by the Committee of the Whole. Wait a second.
You just had to read the result at the bottom.
Yeah. Resolve that the Town Council authorizes Town Mayor, Manager, John Burt to act on behalf of the Town of Groton, including executing any and all documents, and to perform all acts and things deemed necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program, to accept the grant in the amount of $18,939, and to refer the item to the RTM per Rule 6.5.3.
Second, Parker. Moved by Pacino, seconded by Parker. Seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-115-1, Emergency Management Performance Grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-109-1, Bicycle Pump Track Funding. This is on page 33 of our packet. Council Mayor, would you like to take that one?
Thank you. 2025-109 Bicycle Pump Track Funding. Resolve that the Town Council authorize the appropriation of $40,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund balance for funding of the bicycle pump track and refer the matter to the RTM per Rule 6.5.3.
Second. Moved by Merritt, seconded by Rusk. Seeing no hands, I'm going to call for a vote on 2025-109-1 Bicycle Pump Track Funding. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-178-1, FYE 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. This is on page 34 of our packet. Council Parker, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Groton accepts and files the FYE 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFR, and the auditors' reports I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker, seconded by Rusk.
Ooh, I am so sorry.
Council McBride.
Thank you. First off, I want to commend Town Manager Burt and the Finance Department for putting together a report that's in fantastic shape. I think from my review, it's amazing the financial condition the town is, so he should be commended on that. And also the Finance Department for getting this audit done as quickly as they did in the timeframe they did because they were delayed last year, as we all recall. With that being said though, I just want to bring one thing, one thing I think is important out to the residents. The fund balance as of 6:30, 2024, after a $5 million deduction from fund balance to contribute to last year's budget, is set at 40.3 million, which equates to 26.3 percent of operating expenditures. The council policy, as we discussed several months ago, is to ensure the fund balance is in excess of 15 percent. So in my opinion, either one of two situations should possibly occur. The town can consider using some of the additional excessive fund balance to fund a greater portion of the fiscal 2026 budget, therefore lowering the mill rate and taxes upon residents, and/or the Town Council should modify its fund balance policy since the current practice does not reconcile with the current, current policy. My personal opinion is that we should do both. Use some of the excess fund balance funds to offset, to lower the mill rate and offset the taxes, and then potentially to have the council review the fund balance policy as we did a few months ago to make it more aligned with where our fund balance is. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Council Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe we already set that, right? We did that as a rule a couple of months ago, if I can ask the Town Manager if that's correct. Did we, Mr. Burt, did we already decide that fund balance? Did we not have a discussion and vote on it?
There was a discussion, and then there's supposed to be an annual discussion of how much over you want to use. Now, that comes after the audit is accepted, but of course I have to make a decision on the early proposal for usage in the budget.
Okay.
By this time.
So basically, we do this every year? We make a decision every year on this, and it will be time once you put your budget together and then come back to us?
I would, though, encourage the council to don't, don't spend the money all in one year. We don't know what's going to happen. You know, we could lose federal funding for education halfway through the year, et cetera, so, you know, I would be very cautious on using too much more.
And I believe we set for certain percentage. I believe we did, was it 17? I cannot remember.
I'm trying to find if it's online now.
I think we did it split. I just want to confirm so that everybody knows.
Mr. Burt's looking up the policy, if you want to wait a moment.
They're doing work in IT, my drive is down. I cannot look it up right now, sorry.
So.
But also, I just want to, we are just accepting the audit, so.
Correct. I was getting ready to say that, and I'm going to yield the floor back.
I will be putting something on the agenda, though. It's planned.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Boarder line.
Oh, thank you. I just want to kind of share my remarks along with Council McBride, what he stated. I think it was great. I just had a question. Did the Board of Ed receive the findings of this already too, at the same time?
They received it at the same time as us, yes.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I think it's great, and I'm glad, you know, we're doing so well. I also can agree that we do need to, you know, as we follow the guidance, you know, once you look at this to see what percent, I also don't think we should spend it all, but I also don't think that we should, you know, tax the residents more and leave too high of an extra excess either, so. But I do think, you know, a percent of that should offset some cost, so it would be interesting to see what the proposal is that comes forward. Thank you.
All right, seeing no hands, I'm just going to say, I am very excited with the outcome of this year's audit, and thank you to all those in our Finance Department of the Town for all the hard work that you've done. Much appreciated. Let's take a vote. 2025-178-1, 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-117-1, Groton Town License Plate Policy. And actually, this is on page 35. This is Councilor Merritt's referral to the council, so would you like to take that one on page 35?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 2025-117, Groton Town License Plate Policy. Resolve that the Town Council adopts the Town of Groton License Plate Use Policy, requiring any vehicle or trailer that is utilizing a town-provided license plate to apply a semi-permanent logo of that agency on the vehicle utilizing the license plate, and further requiring that the semi-permanent logo not be of the magnetic type.
Second.
May I add some information on this?
Yep, hold on one second. Moved by Merritt, seconded by Rusk. All right, Councilor Merritt, would you like to speak on it?
This is just to identify the vehicles, and so they can't swap the license plates to other vehicles because these plates are owned by the Town of Groton, and they afford the vehicle itself to be on the town's insurance, and also they can't, they don't have to register it and pay for the registration themselves. We've had that happen in the past where a department went out and said, "Look what we bought," and they were told, "Okay, get your own registration. You bought it out of your funds."
Thank you. Hey, do you have a question for Mr. Burt? I'm not sure if this needs an amendment, but what about potentially undercover police vehicles? Are those under?
Any of those, we won't have them do it.
I know, but it does specifically say requiring any.
It might be worth having it written out in there, yes.
Is there any other special other vehicles of such nature?
I can't think of any. That's the only one that's come up prior. If so, we'll come back for a change to the policy, but I don't know of any other.
All right, I would just like to put in amendment that we include, we exclude undercover police vehicles. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, amendment by Franco, seconded by Gaiuski.
Question.
Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question to the Town Manager, would a police detective's car account isn't undercover, or is that a separate category?
Anything that's considered, you might just want to say unmarked vehicle.
Unmarked is a better word. I would like to.
I'll retract my second.
I would like to amend my undercover to unmarked. All right, that one is moved by Franco, seconded by now by Rusk. Let's vote on the amendment first, and then we'll vote on the whole, vote on the whole motion as a whole. So for the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero, amendment. All right, voting on it as a whole now with the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. All right, I'm going to just tell you, I think we hit the jackpot because everything we passed tonight was nine to zero to zero, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Boarder line. I don't have a second, so we're moving on to open agenda items. This is on page 37. Mr. Burt, do you have any updates for us on any of these items? Because I know, can I get veteran's service director position? It's been coming up a lot lately.
Sure, and I just want to mention that the Jimmy Carter Peace Guarding should have been on there. I think the set, set page print was off, so, that is, they are coming, Rotary Club is coming the second Cow of March, so they will be coming here. Veterans position, I've been talking to different people, running down some questions. I did go through, I did go through the COG, the council governments, there was no takers as to being interested in doing something with us, but I've been talking to others out there. A few more calls to make, but I will bring that to the council early April. We'll wait till, I could bring it earlier, but obviously we'll wait till Council Jones is back since he was the lead on this and did a ton of research. Downtown Mystic Parking, we're waiting for the state's committee to wrap up their task force for downtown. They should be done soon. I would not expect miracles. Sutton Park completion, they did get all their permits in place, so that'll be, they'll be hopefully starting in the spring. The, haven't done anything with the miniature, I'm looking for Corbal Housing, there was some discussion during RFP discussions, but other than that, waiting for, you know, to see kind of where we want to go with it. STR process on hold. I can't say I haven't had any complaints in probably two summers now, two years now.
My question is, if we could stop on the STRs, is, is, because I'm wondering if we should bring it as a agenda item, because the Planning and Zoning Commission has made regulations now involving these since we last sent our letter, and wondering if we should keep this as a, a goal, if we still want to move forward, or if we just want to accept what they've done, maybe it should be in a, a quick agenda item.
Okay. Point of affirmation? Go ahead. Council Parker?
Thank you. Miss, through you to Mr. Burt. Were, I thought we were waiting for the legal from the.
It came out.
It did come out?
It did come out, yes. And it affirmed what the earlier court did on, on the grandfathering of, of short-term rentals.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry if you interrupt.
Flooding and weather-related resiliency is being worked on, of course, by our resiliency staff, let's see, and just to mention Public Works, they did just sign a outside engineering contract to do work on kind of the first parts of Mystic to get some better plans together and costs to do gravel and pearl for flooding along there, as well as the backflow preventer, the title valves there, so they're putting some costs to that. That's what we need, is we need to start using some costs so we can start implementing some things.
Agree.
Community Center, we mentioned that, that I'll come back at some point to, some of the newer council members have not seen the earlier plan, so we will present that. Solar Array, we're hoping the agreement is just about done and we can bring it back. There's been some pickups with taxes on it. Let's see, the rest are things that have gone to committees. I don't know if there's anything particular there, and then of course, the newer referrals besides the Peace Guard in our Groton Heights. As a reminder, there is a special meeting the third Tuesday of the month on Groton Heights, and then Pleasant Valley is at committee, and I, we should have something soon.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Council Gaiuski?
Could you just say the date of the special meeting for Groton Heights?
Yeah, Tuesday the 18th. Tuesday the 18th, yes. I believe it's, let me double check, I believe it's 6:30 still.
Yeah. Is this for?
Interviewing finalists for Groton Heights.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Parker. Seconded by Gaiuski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes, we're finishing out the night, nine to zero to zero.
At nine o'clock.
At nine o'clock. At 9:00 PM on the dot.
Amazing, with three groups.
Thanks to everybody, have a good night and drive safe.